Six o'clock. Starting. Everybody. Oh, there's the. That with communication items.
How do you want to do this? All right.
Hello.
Welcome.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. Thanks for being here tonight. As always, we start with our kudos to staff, students, and families for their patience and understanding with the safety and quarantine protocols that we continue to have in place. Some days the roads are bumpy, but it's really nice to know that people are genuinely patient with us and generally understand the why behind what we do. We just finished our March food drive. The peanut butter team raised 1,083 items and $1,348. The jelly team raised 851 items and $970. So our elementary March food drive totals were 1,934 items and $2,318 cents to deliver to our local food shelf. So that was pretty fantastic. I was fortunate enough to be able to deliver the checks both midway through and then at the end over to Allison and her staff. And just the raw emotion of that kind of contribution from our children and their families in the community was was amazing. So shout out to everybody for contributing to that drive. We've kindergarten roundup coming on April 22nd and April 23rd. So that's after school on a Thursday. And then half of the day on Friday. We're excited for that. Parents are just, we're just asking only one parent this year instead of the traditional two so that we can limit our numbers and provide social distancing. We are in the middle of spring benchmarking with Fastbridge and we start MCA's tomorrow. So we're all prepared for that. I'm excited to see how the children do and so that we can identify some some gaps or some things that may have been missed throughout the last year and a half of the pandemic. End of the year planning is underway. We're talking about local field trips so that we can keep that bus time under 30 minutes. And I think it's really a nice opportunity for us to dive into the community a little bit more too and see what opportunities exist. We're working on tornado fire lockdown drills. We're planning fifth grade graduation. So we're knee deep into April and it's exciting. Do you have any questions or concerns?
Questions. So how does, how do the distance leaders do the MCA's? I suppose I could go home and ask, but I don't want to.
We, we gave them the option of coming in to do it with their grade levels. And then we offered them two Saturdays. So those that are selected to do the MCA's will come in this Saturday and next Saturday to take those tests here at the secondary building, or they can sign the MCA opt-out form through the Department of Ed. And we made that available for them as well. So yeah, we've got a nice list going. So we know who's coming and going or staying and it's pretty efficient. Thanks to Don Canol and the assistants for helping us with that.
Any other questions?
All right. Thank you.
David?
All right. Well, good evening. I just thought tonight I would give you just an update on where we are with prom and post-prom and graduation and just some of the things that go along with that. So last Friday, Friday morning, Dominic Plato and Kari Schumacher came and met with the juniors and seniors and just gave them some updates on where we are with prom. You know, we are, we're in a difficult situation with, with restrictions that we have and, and what the school is gonna, what their role is gonna be and how we wanna just kind of go about it this year. And we, we kind of have gotten to the point where Dom and Kari really needed to come up with a plan. And so they went over that with the juniors and seniors on Friday. And, and so it's scheduled for May 15th. Students are, are asked to go out for supper on their own or in however they want to do it, but the school isn't gonna be able to cater in a meal or anything like that. And we're not able to bus the kids. So and then there'll be a car parade and grand march at six o'clock with the opportunity for pictures and things like that. And then the prom and post-prom would be combined. We would have the dance in the middle school gym and the activities in the high school gym. And then we would need to be finished by 11:00 PM. So, you know, where, where we are and what guidance we're gonna get in the next couple of weeks is really, you know, we just really never know. And so that's the plan at this point. Any questions about the prom or post-prom? Okay, I know Dom and Kari were gonna start working on volunteers and give permission slips and things like that lined up. So after that meeting, then we met with the seniors and it was interesting because last year and on March 17th, I think it was, I the last senior meeting I had was in the cafeteria to tell our seniors that their school year was finished. And so it was really good to be able to meet with this group and talk about the things that are coming up with graduation. And, and so we had Pastor Jim came in and talked about backglow for the ministerial staff that's scheduled for May 23rd. Honors banquet. We are kind of up in the air with how that's gonna work as far as being able to serve food and, and where we would have it and things. So we're tentatively planning on hosting that in the, in our cafeteria. But that'll be something that is evolving and that is scheduled for May 23rd at six o'clock. Last day of school for seniors is gonna be May 28th. And that morning, we'll also have our, our graduation practice and they'll get their captain gowns. Graduation scheduled for June 6th. At this point, we are planning a car parade similar to what we did last year. And then when everyone gets to the middle school parking lot, then we would meet out by the football field, get lined up. And, and then the plan is to have the ceremony on the baseball, at the baseball stadium. Just to, a little more spread out and gives us a chance to host more, more people. We'll come up with a backup plan if it's raining, if we have to have it indoors. At this point, we would be limited on the number of people we would be able to have in the, in the gym. So we're, we are hoping for nice weather. And again, those, the restrictions that we have, you know, could be more, could be less by the time we get to that point. But we, we have kind of a plan and I've got some people that are interested in, in volunteering to help get that set up. So we'll start working on that. Mr. Scooblin came in and spoke to the seniors for a little bit and I thought he did a, a great job. All of our senior information is on the senior website that we created. And so they can go on there and find the slideshow from Friday. There's information about what they need to do for their transcripts and scholarships and kind of everything all in one place so that we can just put that on there when we, when we have that for them. Last thing I just want to touch on real quickly is Champ's Cafe. And that has been a year and a half in the, in the making. And, and it's just been awesome to see the transformation of that area that we really were not utilizing like we should have or like we could have. And so it just, it adds to the nuance of the, the student center and creating that area for our students to be. So Champ's opened up, had a soft opening for staff yesterday and today. And we were able to sample items and, and it was popular today. Next week, they're planning on opening for seniors for the first week and then, and then adding as we go along. They'll have some morning hours and then they'll have a little bit of time toward the end of first block where we have our second chance breakfast. They have a website that is very well done and they have a system where you can pre-order and you can prepay and everything. And so we, when we started talking about the hours and how much we were gonna serve and things like that, the biggest thing is we want to make sure that we are, you know, being respectful for our teachers that have class and we don't want, you know, half the class to be tardy or absent or, and so we're kind of doing it in a gradual process. But entrepreneurship and some of our special ed students are really taking this whole business approach and, and working on the marketing and, and the product and ordering and, and all of that. So it's really been a good, good process for us so far. Any questions for me?
What are they serving?
Different kinds of coffee and, and lattes and different flavored iced coffees and chocolate, hot coffees, things like that.
No food?
No food.
They do have non-coffee options, don't they?
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Max is not here tonight. He's actually in the middle of installing the drop cord in the new rest table. And so he had a couple of people that because of the weather had some free time. And so he and a couple others are down looking on that. People not there just.
I think you have one too. There's enough. Okay. Yep, yep. Okay. Good evening. I'm just passing out now as one of our new programs that we just started for, with our early learning. This is our Junior Bulldog Book Club. Matt had stopped down a couple of weeks ago now and was talking about our achievement gap and some integrate, an integration grant and an opportunity of, you know, how we could reach those areas of, of need, which is in Painesville, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's our, our lower income free and reduced bunch population is our achievement gap. So what we did is we just kind of brainstormed and we thought, well, what's one of the best silver bullets or what's the best impact for, for children is, you know, early literacy. So this is kind of similar to the Dolly Parton, you know, has the, where it's a book a month. But when we brought it up to our early learning staff, they all had kids and all have gotten those books. Probably most of us around the tables here have gotten those. They're great. But they talked about, you know, some of those aren't, they don't have like the tactile touching ones for the early learners. And there's some opportunity there to do some things different. So there was some resources with this integration money and grant. And so we'll be using that to fund it. It also is a way for us to get, so right now we purchased the birth data from the county. So we know of anybody that has a child within Sterns County, we know the mother's name, father's name if listed and their address. But we don't have phone numbers and we don't have email addresses. So now with this real quick system that we threw together with a QR code, we can get that information and then we can target them for, you know, we can send out information developmental wise. Your child now is four months. This is kind of what you should be seeing. Or, you know, if you have any concerns, our ECSE staff, our early childhood special that are available, we can just try to build those relationships. We, as a community, had already sent out a bib to a brand new births and a welcome from the district. But this way it kind of gives us that connection, you know, now four times a year or more. So we have mailed those out to all birth through three-year-olds and they're coming back like crazy. So every day we they get a notice on, I just did a Google form with it. And then we're updating the information in our census, but then also now this year, all of the students on the census are in Infinite Campus. So Matt and the secretaries and Mary can all pull up and we have real time data of all students in our district in the Infinite Campus and the census. So it should help us for projecting numbers for preschool screening, for communication, but ultimately we would really try, we'd like to have this help impact the achievement gap. So that's one of our new programs that we have just instituted since our last meeting. Summer programming, we're mostly full summer programming, kind of planning as normal, I guess, in the context of normal nowadays. We are not doing a printed brochure this year just due to the cost and the changes, you know, it's such, it fluxes. So we are adding practically daily new programs to our online registration. Once we kind of have the whole system set up, we will do a PDF and get that out too. And we're trying to do some streamlining on our online site. Some, when summer programs already started, Little League started with draft night last night. We've been able to meet in person again. We had our first advisory council meeting today in person for almost a year for community ed. So we went over, you know, pack planning. I took pictures the other day and they're very excited. They're excited with the opportunities that it's gonna open up for the district and community ed. So pause report, we're currently at 111 students for this year, 60 registered so far for summer. And we are pushing parents that we would like a May 1st deadline for summer so we can plan staff-wise. We are gonna move forward with planning small pods again, just in case of, of, you know, tracing or any exposure issues. So preschool report, we still have room in our four-year-old preschool PM for next year and Friday, three-year-old, there's a few slots left. So the fitness center usage and new memberships are ticking up at the late, which is good. We're excited about that. Bulldog livestream report, some interesting facts for you. Our YouTube channel in the last 365 days had 69, over 69,000 views, which is pretty interesting. We had such a strong live straight, spring sponsor on our sponsor drive that we were able to add some extra games to our, our broadcast. We were supposed to open up tonight with baseball at home, but that of course got postponed to Friday. So Thursday will be our first broadcast of the year and that'll be home softball. So and I sent out the Bulldog Barb today. So continue to send me emails to people that you want added on there. And then other than that, any questions for me?
Well, the, like the prom parade and graduation.
Nobody's talking about prom, but graduation, that's on our schedule and we're planning on doing. Absolutely. Yep. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Danny?
Hi, everyone. A little update on the building or the insulation and stuff. They've been working on the insulating pipes out there, hot water lines and heating lines. And installing ceiling tile and grid for a few days now. The bathroom wall tiling is, should be done soon. Yeah, so some of the sinks in bathrooms, stool. Looks kind of ridiculous in the girls' bathroom. There's 16 stools. Although no dividers yet, but.
There will be dividers. Make sure it's clear.
We're not gonna go European?
They've been doing a lot of heat rocking. I think like Matt's offices are, they're pretty well done and painted even. So oh, they let us know today, we may be able to get into the auto shop May 1st, pending. I'm not sure who is the one that, site logic's gonna let us know, but.
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty confident that May 1st will be a day that we can start moving equipment. Would they, we have abandoned the idea. Originally, we were talking about potentially fourth quarter, could we get in there and have class in there? That's not the scope that we're talking about, but May 1st, we can start making the transition with equipment and stuff. So that'll be, that'll be good.
Let's see, Capser today let me know, we had a couple roof leaks that in his wood shop where the ductwork comes in for the dust collector. And we had one in our estadio shop with, and I talked to them and Horizon Roofing is coming out Monday to take a look at that and fix that. Had a little trouble with the sewer back up from the kitchen. They brought out 150 feet of line on Friday and thought they had it. Monday, same problem. They went through again. They brought a little more line, 155 feet and they got it. Five feet more on Friday, we would have took care of it, but other than that, we marked the football field. I'm not sure if that was big deal or not. And lawn mowers are on, so hope it doesn't spell July.
Questions for Donnie at all?
Thank you.
The operating referendum. Back over here.
All right. So I am going to try to share this. So just give me a second. Okay. So tonight, we're gonna have a little discussion about operating referendum. Appreciate those of you that did send me questions or stuff that you are looking for information specifically to the operating referendum. It definitely makes putting something like this together much easier if I know specifically what questions people have. The intent of this is to ask questions as we go. I think there's some logic and rhyme and reason as to how it is coming together, but by all means, feel free to ask questions if they, if they ask about. So first, we really have three things that we need to, decisions that are really facing the board at this point. The first one has to do with when does the district go and ask voters for a new operating referendum? Our referendum will be in place through the end of November, 2022. And so it's not a requirement that we would go and do something in 2021, but statute does give us the option to be able to do something in 2021. Obviously, the next question then is what is the per pupil amount associated with the new operating referendum? I think again, I think there's some logic, some reason that we can have a discussion around tonight to maybe shed some light on that question. And then I think the third question that everyone needs to consider is we also have a technology levy. And how is that impacted? The technology levy currently runs through 2024. But that is something that we would be able to revoke or modify at any time. So that's really the, kind of the three questions that, that we have in front of us. So I have worked with Jody from Ellers, Jody and Greg from Ellers. They've both been out before. Most of you know them. And one of the things that, that is kind of a background piece of information is really looking at from the state legislature's perspective, how has our general fund formula allowance, so that's the bulk of our dollars, the per pupil aid, how has that tracked relative to CPI or inflation? And you can see back in 2003 where this, this graphic starts. Those two are at the same point and then you can see the trend. If foundation aid kept up with inflation to date, we would be receiving just over $7,000 per student. Right now, that, that dollar amount is about 6,500. So there's about a $500 gap is, is where it's at when you compare student foundation aid as it's tracked over compared to inflation since 2003. That is significant because obviously the cost of our services continue to, to keep pace with inflation. But yet our primary funding source is not keeping pace with inflation. So there's a couple of things that have changed since 2012. In November of 2012, that is the election where our community voted to grant the school district authority for a 10-year operating referendum. It would go into effect for taxes payable in 2013. And the total per pupil amount was $723 per pupil. In 2013, that raised, excuse me, so that would be for the 14th full year, that raised $728,000 and change for the school district. You add in a bunch of legislative changes since 2012. And now in our current authority, again, it's still the authority that was granted in 2012. It's still paid, the term is still 10 years. We're looking at taxes payable this year. But now our per pupil amount according to MDE is $39.25. So our total operating referendum revenue that we're receiving this year, according to MDE, is $36,117. Looking at that at face value, people have got to say, you've got to be kidding me. How does that, that work? So just understand, let's look at these changes. First of all, 2013, some of you will remember that's when this whole local operational or optional revenue started happening. So if you were a school district in 2013 that had more than $300 of voter-approved operating referendum authority, they took that off of your authority and moved it to what they call local optional revenue. So to give you an example, let's just say that we were a district that had $310 of operating referendum authority. And after the 2013 legislature completed their work, the next time MDE made a run, we would have only had a $10 operating referendum because they peeled the $300 off. In Painesville's case, we had $723. They took the first 300 off. Now we have, according to MDE, $423. We are still collecting the other $300 through the levy process. It's just now it's no longer funded or called operating referendum authority. Okay? So then we fast forward to 2015. And now the legislature is gonna go and they're gonna simplify how Minnesota's to count students. Prior to 2015, kindergarten students were .61 of a, of a student count. Elementary students were 1.0. Middle school, high school students were 1.3. Way too complicated. So they changed it to just say everyone's gonna be a 1.0. With the exception of our students in grade seven through 12, they're gonna be 1.2. So they changed the weighting factor. But in doing so, they didn't want it to cost taxpayers more and they didn't want districts to lose revenue. So the way that they did that is they went and recalculated everybody's operating referendum, applied the old system and the dollars you would generate. Then they recalculated students to your new count and divided that by the old system operating referendum amount to come up with a new amount. So this is where now Painesville, rather than having $423 per pupil of operating referendum, now after the 2015 legislature's done with their work, now we have $463.25 per pupil. And the only thing that they did is they changed the weighting to how they count students. Okay? Yes?
So after all this, would I, Joe Blow taxpayers see that difference?
It's tax neutral.
It was.
It was tax neutral for taxpayers, revenue neutral for districts. So then we fast forward to the 2018 legislature and now they have taken local optional revenue one step further. So now rather than saying the first $300 is LOR, now they have said the first $724 is LOR. So then they would look at us and say, okay, we took the $300 off. So now $424 is the benchmark. Anyone who has more than $424 in approved authority, we're gonna take that off as well and put that in LOR. So if you take $463.25 and subtract $424, you end up with $39.25. Okay? So those three changes are how we went from asking our voters in 2012 for $723 a person to now, if you pull our levy certification report from MDE, it will only say our authority is $39.25. Okay? That's important just to know that there are changes that we aren't actually talking apples and apples if we're looking at today's operating referendum potential ask to what was asked for in 2012. All right? Questions on any of that?
I think that's the important thing to understand. And it's gonna be hard to get out the community that we're not comparing the same thing anymore, which it was hard for me to figure this out.
Correct. Okay. All right. So let's now move forward then to see how does this all align? And, and let's get a snapshot statewide. What does this look like? So current LOR is $724 per pupil. So if you are a district that had operating referendum authority granted to you by your school district community prior to 2018, the first $724 of that authority is now transferred to local optional revenue. Whatever's left is what your actual operating referendum is. Okay? The current average operating referendum for all districts throughout the state is $860 per pupil. Well, you have to add that to the 724 to really come up with what the total dollar amount is per pupil. So if your LOR plus your operating referendum average for all districts across the state right now is just north of 1,500, 1,584, just, just about $1,600 per pupil. is just north of 1,500, 1,584, just, just about $1,600 per pupil. That is the average amount out there for districts. Now, remember though, there's a huge swing to this. There are still a certain number of districts that do not have an operating referendum. They are at zero. You can also find other districts that have as high as $3,500 per pupil. So the, the, the spectrum is large, all the way from zero to $3,500. Where does Painesville sit on that spectrum right now? Painesville sits at $39.25.
Yeah, 3,500 plus a 724.
Nope, that includes the 724.
So yeah. So we technically be.
Seven.
724 over.
763.25.
Correct.
Yep.
Still way in the low end.
Yep. Okay? So then let's get a little more granular and let's start looking at some things that maybe are, you know, in our backyard, neighborly. I took some of these that I felt like were conference schools that also aligned with us with enrollment, and you can kind of see where these districts fall. Couple of things of note here, there are, I believe, 14 districts that are comparables on this list. And if you average all of the districts on the list, the average is 362.92.
On the local list?
On the local list, yep. And then if you take, and if you just say, okay, well, some of these don't have an operating referendum right now, you know, like Recore or NLS, Albany, those three districts don't have a referendum. So if you peel those out and say, okay, what's the average of the districts that actually do have authority in place? Then you're looking at 461. I think in my mind, either one is an average that gives us, it's a data point. It gives us a point of reference as to, to where that's at. An interesting trend, as you look at comparing districts and operating referendums, an interesting trend is inflationary indexing. I do not know, I need, I would need to do some more research and ask some questions exactly when the inflationary indexing became an option in the state of Minnesota. But originally, I do remember the time when it came, and it was initially greeted with a lot of skepticism. The thing that I will tell you is when you look at the districts now that are, that have an inflationary factor, most of these districts are the districts that have most recently passed new authority. Look, for instance, BBE just passed their new authority last year, theirs is indexed to inflation. SOC Center, I believe, was two years ago, theirs is also indexed to inflation. So know that that trend is developing out there, and that's something we'll look more into as we start diving into some, some numbers as well. Questions on any of that?
When I look at this one, so New London Spicer, if I recall, they lost their referendum. So if they had it, and we assumed that was $500, $600, the averages should be higher than what that says.
Yeah.
If it wouldn't have asked for it, that district might not, they needed it either.
I did talk to the London Spicer because I knew that that had happened, and so I did actually reach out and talk to them. I don't, and I was working on this about a month ago, and so I don't know what's changed in the London Spicer in the last month. But the answer that I got is that they were thinking that they would be going back out in November, and the dollar amount would be anywhere from 300 to $1,000 per pupil.
Okay.
Is where they.
Reasonably, and we're not going to comparison, our averages should be realistically higher.
Yeah, and I think the reality, Bruce, is every year that this goes one more year out, the averages aren't coming down. I mean, that, and it goes back to that, that inflation chart. As that gap widens, there's only one tool for school districts to try to close that gap, and that's to then ask the local tax base for an operating component.
So if I think back to when we ran this last referendum that we did, there were schools on there that I am certain that were in that $1,300, $1,400, when we ran a 723.
Yep.
So when I look at like, um, Gold and some of those others, that's almost what it is. Take the 724 added to that, they're back at what they were talking about back then.
Okay. Yeah, like BBE's number that is communicated there, the 661.26, you have to add 724 to that to get your total amount.
Correct.
That, that you're talking about. Yeah.
And that's 10 years ago, or eight years ago.
Which one?
When I, when I saw those numbers.
Sure.
And I can't remember what districts they were. I could probably find it because I don't throw anything away. But I know there was a series of them in that $1,300, $1,400 range when we did 723.
Other questions?
You might not have this data, but with the disparity in the amounts, is there, do we know, is that tied to outcomes at all? For districts that are not investing, and that's maybe something that you might not know that, but I'm curious how the impact's actually outcomes.
Yep. So I, you're right, I don't tell that. But I think what this list here tells me is the three districts on this list prior to pre-COVID education, those three were probably the fastest growing districts on the list. I think that's the driver of why they are still at that zero number. The other districts that are on this list, some of them are in declining status, some of them are pretty much holding flat, and some of them might be categorized as very modest growth. But I think that would be something that would have more of a correlation maybe than necessarily achievement outcomes. So now we're going to get into Matt's logical math. And there's lots of holes in this, and it's going to be, there's a counter argument to it. And I just don't know what that is because it's not logical to me. So I'll present it, and I'm sure that each of you can tell me what, what the flaw is in this. So I look at back to 2012, and I want to take and know what would our buying power today be if we had the 763.25 approved back in 2012? So take all the legislative action out of it. And I just want to try and get a snapshot of what has inflation done to our purchasing power today? So I took 763.25, I went to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, and I put, used their inflation calculator, put that number in and said, shoot me what that should be today. And it told me it should be 871.97. So then I just played the same argument, and, and I'm not going to try to guess what inflation's going to be for the next 10 years, but I'm going to just use the previous 10 as trend data. And so then I took 871.97, and I went back to 2011 and said, project out what that's supposed to be in 2021. And I know I'm assuming, I'm assuming that inflation is going to trend in the next decade what it did the previous decade. Could that assumption be flawed? Absolutely, it could be flawed, and I would be the first one to say, yep, it was a wrong argument to make. But at the same time, if you look at inflation over the last 25 years, yes, there's been some dips and there's been some spikes. But I think there's also been relatively, a lot of years where it's been relatively consistent. So if we do that, then you're looking at, okay, so if we put a new operating referendum in place, what do we need that operating referendum to be on year 10 to have similar purchasing power to year one? And that's where I come up with the number 996.17. So in my mind, the difference with that is $232.92, you add our 39.25 onto that. To me, the bottom line conversation that this board should be having is if we just want to be talking about the 723 that was approved in 2012, and how do we equate that to today's dollar? You need to add $272.17 to it to, to come out with inflation. Now again, I am sure that argument has flaws, but that's the kind of the logical that I work out the math problem. Okay?
So a question about that.
Yep.
Based from the administration side, that 723, had it kept up, is that sufficient for us to have what we need?
We're going to get to that.
I was just going to say, no, if I were Maggie, I would ask if the initial amount was sufficient. Good deal.
So then the next, the frequent question that I get is, what are the, the trends with, with operating success? You know, there's lots of talk about doing operating referendums in even years. Well, even years tend to be when most of the state and federal offices are up. And there's talk about, well, no, just stick to the odd years. Well, 2021 is an odd year. And then, of course, every four years, again, on even years, it's a presidential election. And so that's another point on here. And you can see that over 25 years, there's been lots of questions, and so it gets kind of, kind of jumbled. So let's just break it down into a table. If you look at, again, this comes from the Minnesota Department of Education, this isn't my data, this is theirs. But if you look at in that time period from 90, 94 to 2019, odd years, there was a pass rate of 73.6%, almost 74%. Almost 1,000 questions passed, 358 failed. Presidential elections, that pass rate goes to 55.1%. 227 passing, 185 failing. And then even years, 54.5% roughly, with 285 passing and 239 failing. To me, that's a significant spread. When you're talking about odd year versus presidential versus even, I would say that to ask that question, does election year impact success? I would say that it would be in the board's best interest to target an odd year.
Is that because of voter turnout, or what's, what's the?
I think that's a piece of it. Yep.
Not muddy. That muddy is the, part of other.
Right.
Votes and, and the top processes for the voters.
And I would think timing of the year. So if you have it in August of a political year, you're right in the thick of it. If you had it in May, it's just starting, and some of them were in March. So I would think if you had it earlier, you could maybe agree that it could look more like an odd year.
And early and very. The only thing, a little bit of a question, because the school district, you've got a lot of flexibility with special elections. They, the legislature is really trying to push operating referendums to November. So, um, for instance, in 2021, the only option we have for an election is the November statewide election date. In 2022, there is a spring option, but it's not like it used to be. And it definitely isn't like the bond question. So when we went with our building bond, we did that question in August, primarily because we wanted to be able to get out for bids in the winter, rather than waiting till November and then getting out for bids in the spring and, and all that. But there's more flexibility with bond questions to be able, I think there's like actually six windows during the year where you can ask a bond question via a special election. Operating referendums are different, they don't give us the flexibility. There is some that year prior to expiration, but it's not, it is not the same as asking a bond question. Okay? Delayed referendum authority, so this would be something like, for instance, if, if I, in 20, in the fall of 2021, if we wanted to go and ask our community for a new authority, we would have the two options. We could have the question structured where it's a revoke, the current amount, and it's replacing it with a new amount. If that question were to pass, that would then immediately take effect. Or we could structure it in such a way that we would allow our current amount to sunset, meaning run its course, run its life, and then once it sunsets or its life is done, the new amount kicks in. So that's what they're talking about when they're saying delayed referendum authority. You can go and ask before your referendum expires to be able to establish what your new authority is going to be, and you could just let your current authority expire or sunset as it was originally scheduled. And it's kind of interesting, when you look at.
The pass rate.
At least I thought it was interesting, maybe a lot of people don't care. But if you delay it, the pass rate was almost 83%. Whereas if you go with an immediate authority, meaning you're revoking and replacing, the pass rate was about 64%. I thought that was interesting.
So statistically, you'd be best going in an odd year and delaying it?
If you want to try and.
You fell on.
And capitalize on, on the best circumstances, that would be exactly that. Okay?
I think in a delayed, people will think you planned rather than reactionary.
Yeah.
Everybody hates reactionary.
I think that means only they're having to explain it too.
And you're speaking to, which one?
Yeah, this is what I'm going to do, we're running out, we're going to start over again. Sounds like analytics is taking over the school board.
So then you can break it down and look at per, per amount. And to me, this one is absolutely confounding to me. I immediately would have thought, oh, you know, there's got to be a sweet spot somewhere between probably 300 and 600, that those are going to be your 70, 80% pass rates. I'm completely wrong.
What timeframe does this come from?
This runs from, this runs from 1994, 1994 to 2019.
And this is statewide?
Statewide.
Taking everybody in the.
Everybody's, yep. So it's interesting, and now granted, some of these get to be a small N or a small data pool. You know, when you're looking at 800 to 899, in those 25 year, 24 years that are up here, there were only 67 questions that fit into that amount. So I don't want people to think, well, it's happening all the time, and they've got an 88% pass rate. But you, I think we have to keep that in mind, that you're not looking at something that necessarily has the, the largest N. So I just thought this was interesting as just kind of a, a more tidbit. I think at the end of the day, when you look at that 25-year span, you're still looking at just over, just under 2,300 questions that ultimately they're running at about a 66% pass rate. So two out of three have been, have been successful. So looking at enrollment data, you can see our enrollment, clearly, we would be, well, I, I think we would have been classified as probably maintaining or, or flat until COVID has, has come around. When you look at open enrollment data, again, I do think 2021, COVID has, has impacted that. I think when you look at families that have chosen other opportunities, whether it be homeschool, whether it be online academies, I think there's some prevalence that that may happen with open enrollment families first. And, and so I think that has, has impacted that number. The good news to this is we have a strong tradition here, a strong history of being open enrollment positive. So we're bringing in more kids in open enrollment than students or families in our district that are choosing to go elsewhere. That's a, a good thing. And then if you look at our census data, and this is what Matt was referencing when he was talking about infinite campus. So when you pull up our, our current census data, and when you look out to 26, 27, I don't want people to be alarmed that it's 26. Remember, those are kids right now that are less than one year old. And, and we don't even have one year of, of a full year of data to actually be there. So don't get alarmed by that, it's just, it's part of our census data, so I thought I would include it. And in retrospect, maybe I should have left it off. However, last year, we had 81 invites to kindergarten roundup. This year, for, for next year, we're looking at 75 invites, and you can kind of see where that goes. I think this kindergarten roundup, these numbers kind of ebb and flow like what we're seeing our enrollment do. So these, these shouldn't really surprise people because this is also what our K-12 numbers look like. We have a couple of classes that are either 80 or 81, and then we have a class that may be 59. And we've kind of got that ebb and flow to it. Okay? So the question then becomes the when. And, you know, I don't know what the more important question is, if it's the how much versus the when, but I think those are the two primary. If we look at 2021, our option is election day. That's November 2nd, 2021. That date, for some reason, I need to check that. Is that the first Tuesday after the first Monday of November?
Would be if that was.
I'm sure it was the third.
Okay, so maybe it is, right? For some reason, I was thinking it was later.
The second.
It is? Okay. All right. Sorry about that, let's get back to task here. So. So the question then becomes, when does the board have to make a decision? Now, this decision date is by statute. This is not my recommended decision date. But by statute, the board has to notify election authorities and county auditors 74 days prior to election day. That's where the date, August 20th of 2021, is coming. Clearly, I am not recommending we wait till August to make this decision. If this is something that's going to go moving, I would suggest that we make this decision in a much more prudent manner than than waiting till August. I don't believe we need to make a decision at your next meeting in April, but I think May is probably a timeline where the board should start having some idea of what the direction is going to be. November of '22, we will have a spring option. That, Bruce, would be your special election.
In spring.
What's that?
When in spring? Will it be the March ones?
No, I want to say it's either April or May. But I will confirm that and get the exact date on when we could do it.
Yeah, but the politics start so early for the even years that by May, you're full scale in the politics of.
Yeah. But we do, just, the board just needs to know, we do have a spring option. That would be very similar to our August bond question, where the only question on the ballot would be ours. And so then we would be responsible for that election and those costs associated with it. I am digging to see exactly what the final cost was of the August election. I will get that number to the board. But I believe it's going to come out somewhere around that 15,000 number. But just know that would be a similar situation, but I will get you that exact cost. The same date to decide or notify county auditors applies, whether it's spring or whether it's fall of 2021. It's still, we're bound by 74 days prior to election is when we would have to to notify county auditors. Of course, the other 2022 option is November 8th, the statewide election date. And when you back up 74 days from November 8th, you get to August 26th is the the date that we would have to know. I know that some people have asked, well, why don't we just wait till '23? The next odd year. '23 will then impact state funding. We will create a situation where we will go a year without an operating authority in place. Now, I think the board could explore that. I wouldn't recommend it. Just remember, our operating authority right now is 36,000 and some odd dollars. So we're not talking about a half million dollar immediate deficit that we would have if we don't have something in place. But the district would have a budgetary deficit that they would have to include or or plan for if the question was to let our operating referendum sunset. And then we would approach it in November of 2023. I would recommend we either do something in '21 or '28. '21, if you're nervous about what what the outcome is, go '21, because then you have options in '22 to go to Plan B and come up with another another option. If you're fairly confident in where things are going and you're willing to just say, we're going to go in '22 and and go from there, that's that's an option as well.
Can we have two dates in '22?
There is the ability. There's language exactly how far apart they have to be. And Ellers is actually going to come out to the next work session, and they're going to talk about that specific thing. But yes, there is the ability to do that. It's just there's there's certain guidelines out there. So now let's start talking about kind of the per pupil amount. And we can, we can run some examples too, if if people want to to do that. So the example that I've run here is is taking $500 per pupil as the authority. And so we would take our existing 34, 25, and we would could do it one of two ways. You could revoke and replace it if you want, or you could let the 34, 39, 25 expire. And then, when it expires, implement a new $500 per pupil. When you look at the tax impact of this, looking at at the average home value in our in our district is roughly, I think it's just under that 175, it's probably right around 170-ish. So if you use that 175 number, that's $145 annually is what the change or the increase by that authority would would come to, which 145 equates to just over $12.08 among the is what you would be looking at. Now, remember, and it's important when we're talking about operating referendums. Operating referendums only tax the house, garage, and one acre for those agricultural properties. And so that's why when you see, and when Ellers is going to present some more runs, you're going to see like on the bond question, how we had all those classifications of property that were on that tax impact. This one is simplified because, one, the seasonal recreational residential properties, they don't, they are not taxed on operating referendums for schools in Minnesota. So that's completely eliminated. And then the ag property, the actual land itself, isn't taxed either. It's just the value of the house, the garage, and the one acre. So that's why these tax impact statements look like they're missing a bunch of properties. It's because these are the only properties that are being taxed in those operating referendums. The good news, obviously, is there's classifications that aren't impacted. You would think if a property isn't impacted, that might be somebody who wouldn't oppose an operating referendum. The bad news is you're shrinking the overall tax base. And so the impact for those that are involved in the in the generating that operating referendum amount are impacted. And and one would argue it would be at a higher rate because you're you're taking classifications out. So now let's dig into this and look at an example with this calculator that if we take $500 per pupil, and that would generate us $495,500 in additional referendum revenue. So if you take and plug this into our current revenues and expenses, you can take kind of and see a projection of where do we end up if we do this and we do it without an inflation index? Where do we end up in year seven, eight, and nine of this operating referendum? And so you can kind of see what happens here. The annual growth factor, 3%. That's what we're putting in for our expenses as far as rolling payroll, all of that over people, positions, those things, 3% growth factor. This does include an assumption of a 2% formula, state aid formula allowance. And so that is is factored into the revenue side. And then it just simply takes and adds the 495,500 onto it as well. But we're not increasing that by 2% every year. That's just an add-on that's isolated. So you can see how it starts out, looks really good up through year five. And it has that, we're coming out with a positive balance. We're able to to actually accumulate some dollars in our net position in order to fund those downside years or or years six through 10. But as you get to year nine and 10, you can see we are starting to run rather significant deficits. And you can actually see in year 10, our net position is is just over $350,000 in the in the hole. I would suggest that this model would maybe put the district in a position where it's going to tell the community that it would like to implement this authority for 10 years. And then potentially, after year eight or nine, the board may be back to the community saying, well, we would like to revoke early and replace with a new amount. There are districts that do that. There are districts that use that strategy. And and it and it's fine. I kind of get the sense, at least in this community, that there's value in if you're saying this is a 10-year plan, then it should be a 10-year plan. So that's, I think, something that is important for the board to consider.
Is this a typical formula of that 3% growth annually and factoring in? Like, is that kind of?
3% is based on our current master agreements.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what I, as well, with them.
It's based on our current labor agreements. This, also, there's some assumptions that we have to remember that we're carrying forward our current staffing plan in this. So this assumes that the same number of faculty members, the same number of support services and all of that. And it also assumes that we're talking about relatively level enrollment. This operating referendum revenue is calculated annually by MDE. So if we experience a large decline in enrollment, our operating referendum revenue will decline with that enrollment. The flip side is also true. If we see an additional increase to our enrollment, our operating referendum revenue will increase due to more pupils as well. Okay? So then, if we take this and we roll this to the same example, but now let's put the inflationary index on it as well. So I did go, Ellers actually sent me the Minnesota Department of Ed run as far as what they are projecting out for inflation. The problem is, is they only project, I believe it was either seven or eight years out. They don't project a full 10. But what they did provide is they did provide 10 years of history from 2011 to 2021. And so I chose to use that as, again, kind of a historical trend. That comes out at 2.33%. You can see down here that the state aid increase is, again, built on an assumption of 100 or 2%. So I left this run at 2%. This run does not have the actual referendum revenue increasing by 2.33% a year. It's increasing by 2%. So this run is actually a little bit on the conservative side, in my opinion. But when you start looking at this now, again, you see the same trend. This gets us in a really good position in positive cash flow again through year five. But now, obviously, as that inflationary index is going to keep pace and give us more buying power, you can actually see that our net position remains positive through year 10 in this proposal. It's roughly $120,000, $118,000 and some change. I'll call it $120,000. But again, it it looks, obviously, it it looks different than than not having the inflationary piece. To me, this, to me, is the example that I would use as to explain why is it we're asking for the $500 per pupil? Because to me, this is the one that, when you try to project out what the needs are and where things are at in 10 years, this one seems to be a scenario that cash flows. Now, there's a couple of things you can look at when you're trying to make those projections. First of all is, number one, do we anticipate any large development in our district? Right now, I don't think there's really anything going on that that we can say in the next two, three years is in the works or being discussed about either adding single-family homes or some sort form of of housing that would automatically equate to having children, school-aged children in that housing as well. So to me, I don't necessarily see any factors that say, hold on, wait, we've got 160 home development that's going in just west of town. We need to also take that into consideration and factor that into what that could feed enrollment. I don't see any of that. The flip side is also, I think, important because I don't right now see our large, our largest employers. I don't see them in a position where they are either struggling, wavering, or potentially looking at relocating or leaving our community. That obviously would have the other impact where potentially people would be relocating for new positions and taking current students with them. So I think both of those pieces of that conversation are important to to think about as well.
In an open discussion, like I'm assuming we're having, the one factor that I see is the far lane. I'm not sure that Coast Spring had a whole plan of building a whole bunch of homes for people till it showed up. Or the demand was there. I'm not sure Richmond thought about it. I'm not sure Spicer thought about it. I'm not sure New London thought about it. And one of the things we have this happening is we have a far lane coming through here, which is going to make accessibility to jobs a little bit different and education a little bit different. But then I have to look at us. We have a technical division that we have worked on. Our whole CTE division, we have the whole community behind us. We have expanded in other areas as a whole. What we can provide is excellent. I think when we look at the major factor, I personally don't see that we're not going to get back to some of the enrollment that we had. But I'm anticipating we're going to grow. And I don't think it's going to be you or the mayor or other people. It's going to just happen because of demand. And I'm just using those schools as an example. Look what's happened to those schools since the far lane went to. Look what's happened to those communities. Man, it's just changed. I think it's coming here.
And that very well could be. I mean, and I I think, you know, when you look at from facility standpoint and other things, we're positioned nicely for that.
But but the question would be, let's say, in the next five years, we increase by 100 students. That increases revenue to a certain extent, it increases expenses to a certain extent. Will the expenses outweigh the revenue? Or would would state revenue keep up with what the expenses might be? How do we know that? I mean, what?
So the, and it's it's an interesting question. It's a good question. My experience has been as as enrollment has increased. Now, I have not been in a district where all of a sudden enrollment increased by 30% over two years. But I'm talking about just steady enrollment increases. Those are very budget friendly and help be able to manage that budget growth. Unfortunately, the flip side to that is even a slow decline can be very difficult to manage because it's one of those things where, well, I I saw a legislator you know, I have a great deal of respect for, was making the comment, well, if public schools in Minnesota have lost 17,000 kids statewide, isn't there fewer resources that would need to be given to public education then? Well, let's play that out locally. If we could decide that we're going to lose 10 kids and they're all going to come from A grade level, great. We can probably manage and come up with lots of different ways to staff that. But the problem becomes when you lose 10 kids, you're out 110 grand. And it might only be one kindergartner, two sixth graders. It, I mean, it doesn't give you the ability to just say, okay, now we're only going to have one less section in this middle school grade. It it's not that easy, but you're still out the $110,000 in revenue. So I would say, if you're talking about a slow increase, a steady increase in in a positive enrollment growth, that would be very budget friendly and that would be something that'd be absolutely well.
If you took, say, 20 new kids a year for 10 years, spread out over 12 grades.
Yes.
You can handle that.
Yes. Yeah, if all of a sudden we go from about 910 kids and in two years, we're up at 1,200, that's a whole different animal. And that's a, that's a whole, whole different thing. Yeah. Other questions as far as as the the calculator would be concerned?
So this answers the question before of staying, remaining where we were at the 200. And, you know, when you did the calculation, what was the number?
272.
We would be.
Yeah, I mean, I could put that in if you guys want to see what that. Yeah, I can tell you right now.
When we did the last one, our long-range forecasting, and Cheryl, you'll remember this, we were going to be out of money in like year six or seven. That was very concerning. That was very concerning that we, for some reason, it didn't pan out for the 10 years. Now, lots of things have happened, one being growth, I think that's helped us. But we have made it a long ways with this thing. Do you mind if I share one of our discussions today? I asked Matt to shoot this Excel sheet to me and I copied the Excel sheet. And I thought, my question last time was, how do we know that we're asking for enough? Right? What if? What if? Do we need to wait till after September to decide on this? Lo and behold, for my amazement, because I believe this is nicely put together, I took the revenue at 8302 and I added 40 students to it. The number I've heard is 10 grand. I know that's not real rough. Added $400,000 to it. It said instead of 500, we needed 519. When I put 60 students in, it says we needed 531. It's not the end of the world and they all came off to be about the same on the net position. But I increased expenses to match on everyone. So when I added the 400, added 400. So that would tell me that if we were at 60 more students than we have in our projections, that we're $31 off. Too low. Just, and it's very arbitrary, but I think it was a good indicator. It flowed really nicely in fact.
Just thinking though, if you go out to the public, what would they look at? Say 500 or 531? Would they say, well, 531, you must have really done your homework. 500 is the number that you've thrown out there.
But that's taking the enrollment we had before the COVID and popping it in there. So when Matt said last time, he wasn't too concerned about it over the long haul. As much as I didn't, didn't necessarily catch on to that. He and I talked for a while today. But when I got the sheets and I put it in, it was a surprise to me. It's budget friendly because that isn't there, but I also participated with some of the board when we were making cuts around here. There are cuts that I was pretty nervous about when we did them. And I think that it had its ramifications, which I didn't appreciate very much. We didn't have any choice. I would hate to get us in, into that just to be neutral from before and after COVID. I'm assuming it's going to go away at some point in time.
And I do think students are going to be back. I really do. I think there is a lot of positive positivity and a lot of good things going that will bring students back. I just, I'm not convinced that it might not be more of a two-year cycle to return than come fall that students are just going to be back. I think it's, it might be more of a 24-month process to have the students return. But who knows? I don't have a crystal ball with it either. Completely wrong.
Well, when I did it, it surprised me actually. I thought, shoot, that's going to go down, wouldn't you think? Bring all those students in? It didn't. But the other thing is, if we do have the growth from some of what may happen just by demand, we're, we're going to go for, we're going to be back to this sooner than later anyway. Kimball fought with their operating levy for years and I think may still be fighting with it to a degree because they had this inflow of kids and it added the state dollars, but it didn't cover everything, which whittled away on the monies that they had in reserve.
Did I miss something? Was, isn't 500 just, or did we decide 500 at some point that I missed? Isn't it just an arbitrary example?
So, I, well, it's an arbitrary example, but I think it's the ballpark of what this board should be considering. So when I put these together, I started where Maggie was talking about with that inflationary number. That's where I started. And it comes back, you're, you're a million dollars short is where you're at. So then I started working around the idea of, okay, if the average is that 860 number, let's go somewhere in the middle of that and zero. So then I put in 400. Again, we were still getting to the point where we were, you know, $300,000, $400,000 short at the, at year 10. And so then getting, I got to $500 per pupil as a place where I think it makes sense and it's logical as to where that would come from, as to how it would cash flow for 10 years. If we are serious about considering the inflationary index piece. If we're talking about going back to do something without the inflationary index, then I think, yeah, I think we're probably going to be up closer to that 550 number or so maybe even a little north of that in order to get it to really have a fair shot at cash flowing out for 10 years.
And then inflationary index also is, if I'm interpreting this, pretty favorable for the taxpayer because we're not asking for a boatload upfront to cover inflation for the years. It's going to occur as we need it. Again, delayed, say it was delayed and then say that you're putting inflation right around it. You're doing the best you can for the cash flow of our taxpayers. Am I interpreting that right?
So yeah, it is an arbitrary number, Ashley, and we can throw different numbers in here. The board wants to see what different numbers look like, but.
I was just missing it because of that $900 number you had. But that's the 272.
Yes.
That's the same thing. So when you go to actually ask for it, you're not saying 900.
Correct.
And your numbers that were showing the pass rates were using this number or the other number?
Both. Because it was from 1995, is that what you're asking?
Are you talking about this slide, Ashley?
Or were you talking about the one that included? The one that had the pass rates on it that you said was like from 1990 something all the way? So that would have been, lots of legislative changes.
Slide number this is?
Is it this one or?
No, keep going. Next one. This, well.
So this, this chart is just a statewide analysis of that 25-year period. That's, that's all this represents.
But we see these down here on the higher end.
Yep.
With the positive pass rates.
Yep.
Smaller, smaller size. So it's like 67.
100, there's, you know, 67, there's 215 that are over that. But are those how much they asked or is that the amount?
So for instance, like the 700.
The amount on the ballot.
Yeah, the 700 to 799. That's, there were 98 questions total that had somewhere between 700 and 799 on the ballot for per pupil operating amount.
Right.
Of those 98 questions that fit into that range, 67 passed and 31 failed.
And we were one of them.
Correct. Yeah. The 723 that, that our community supported would be in that 67 number of the pass rate. Yep.
Which again, your 500 per pupil would actually be 1224.
Right. I think, you know, that's, my only concern is that we make that very clear to people because somebody who remembers is going to say, well, last time you asked for 723. This time you're only asking for 500. So it's a decrease, right? My taxes are going to go down. No. It's actually going to be, I added in here at one point, 1224.
Well, yeah.
We're not asking for the 1224.
Correct.
But.
That number doesn't show up on the ballot, on the question.
See, and that's, and so that's the other thing that Ellers, our municipal financial advisor, they are going to come out and assist us with. Is very well, they're very versed in this and they will provide us that, that material to be able to help with that. But correct, the way Minnesota statute right now is written, when we go ask for $500 per pupil, we are asking for $500 per pupil because the 724 that we had authority for, that is now called local optional revenue and that is no longer something that appears on an operating referendum ballot.
And we don't just, we don't have to disclose that on the ballot specifically.
Correct. But to your point, Rick, I think you're absolutely right and Thomas as well. It is going to be important when we're talking about $500 per pupil to be able to go back and in a nice, neat, tidy way of doing this, address this issue because absolutely there's going to be people that are saying, hold on, we approved 723 last time I did this. Yes, absolutely.
And I'm sure Ellers will also have charts about tax increases and what impact this will have for households.
Yep. And they would also have a tax calculator that we would be able to put on our website that any property owner could go and put their estimated market value in and then it would put out exactly what their current school district tax should be. And then if the measure passed, what their, their new responsibility would be. Yep.
One thing I mean that I want to be careful of is that we don't undercut our students. We have created an environment where we're being nimble, we're moving, we're changing quickly. And if we're strapped, how do we make those choices? How do we quickly pivot with anything that's changing? And I, I want to make sure that we have that flexibility to do that. I also think with, you know, we know the studies that came out, which were not so great this year, about even teachers overall in Minnesota. If we want to continue to attract and retain the best faculty and staff, we have to make sure that we're supporting them, you know? And I think that's something beyond the students we really have to take in consideration. What is it going to look like seven, eight, nine, 10 years from now?
And I think the other thing that makes this difficult is it is hard to, well, I would say it's virtually impossible to try to project out and do any sort of logical projection of what our staffing levels are going to be in years six, seven, eight, nine, 10. So for this, to be able to really have a comparison, you really have to be committed to holding staffing levels the same because that drives expenses. And relatively speaking, holding student counts level because that drives revenue. That being said, it would be foolish for the district not to stay committed to those characteristics you're talking about Maggie, about being nimble, about being, but willing to evolve and change and move. And that might impact what does staffing arrangements look like? What do, what do our delivery methods look like five years from now? I would hope we're not sitting here saying that they look identical to what we're doing today. But those are just very difficult factors to try to, to calculate or assign a value to with any clarity. Other questions? Can we move on to our tech levy? Okay, so our tech levy operates a little bit differently. And so now, when you start talking about tech levy, you can see that this is a tax impact statement from, from Ellers. And now you're all of a sudden seeing all these classifications of property again. So the tech levy is actually spread out among all of the property classifications. Again, it's the same pros and cons that we talked about the other previously. The good news is, is it's spread out amongst all classifications. And so it lowers the tax rate needed to generate the dollars. The negative is it's spread out amongst all the tax classifications. The other thing that is interesting about technology levy, or it's actually called a capital levy. We are using it for technology. I would recommend we continue to use it for technology. But the capital levy is, it's based on a flat inter-tax rate. So what actually goes on the ballot is you are asking voters to approve a tax rate for, in our case, would be a capital levy that would be used for technology. Not only bringing in new technologies, but also maintaining and updating existing technologies as well. So when we look at this, right now we are generating about $290,000 or so on our technology levy. Our current tax rate is 3.567, I believe is the tax rate that we're currently at. So interesting thing about technology levy or capital levies, they're tied to net tax capacity. So net tax capacity, the way that works is if you take your property tax statement at home and you look at your estimated market value. For most properties, homestead residential being one of them, 1% of your estimated market value is what the state identifies as your net tax capacity. Now, some classifications are different. So for instance, if you own a duplex, that classification, it's actually 1.25% of your estimated market value is what your net tax capacity is. But the interesting thing is since this levy is calculated based on net tax capacity, it again, you're approving a tax rate. And then net tax capacity is actually tied with the property wealth growth within your school district. So for instance, in Pinkville area schools in our district, most years, the property wealth in our district has grown anywhere between 3 and 5% annually. And so as those estimated market values increase, 1% of that amount increases at the same rate. So that's the interesting thing with this is there really isn't a need for an inflationary index and there isn't one available anyway. But the reason there isn't is because typically those property values are increasing annually. The community assessors are evaluating those and applying some form of factor. Now, could there be an economic downturn where all of a sudden property values decline? Of course there could. You know, 2008, 2009, 2007, there certainly could be that circumstance. And that would also be reflected in this. So if our property value in our district goes down, that net tax capacity is going to go down and hence we're going to generate less revenue from this. So here's an example, and this is really, I think, where things need to be. I have, have identified about $365,000 worth of expenses that would fit into a technology capital levy that I think it would be good for the district to be able to package these and put them out there as this is what we want to fund with our tech levy. So I just started with our base here being 2122 and our levy certification paperwork had our net tax capacity for 2122 at $9,82,393. So I played around with tax rate to generate $365,000 and that's when I ended up at that 4.02%. So that's a fixed amount for the 10 years of the levy. And you can see what that does with our, with our revenue for those, those years. Now, interestingly, the net tax capacity growth factor I have in here at 103% or 3% annually. If you look at recent trend, our property wealth in our district has increased more than 3%. So I would say that's a conservative number. The annual expense growth, that again goes back to our master agreements and our, our people. And so that's why that's at that 3%. That's what's driving the expense increase. And of course, it only makes sense that if we're having our net tax capacity grow by 3% and our expenses grow by 3%, those two are for the most part going to cancel each other out because it's, it's 3%. So that's why those, that annual balance really doesn't, doesn't change a whole lot. It moves just slightly. It ticks up by a few bucks each year. So that could, could potentially be a solution for the tech levy. Now, when we compare that to this tax run, and you can see, if my eyesight is going to be good to me, $160,000 residential homestead has about a $17 net change. You would have to take that $17 and then add it to the net change on the operating to get the total tax impact. If we did the tech levy and the operating referendum together on one ballot, we would have two questions. And then we obviously would have to communicate those, the complete tax, tax impact for property. And then, um, we obviously would have to communicate those, the complete tax, um, tax impact for property. This one here is a, uh, higher than the model that I have. This one actually generates, um, four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars annually. And as you can see here, um, I would have it generate three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars initially. And so, um, the tax impact that would come from this example is actually lower than the tax impact that Ellers has, has provided me here. Questions on the, on the tech levy side of, of things?
So if you get to the end of a tech levy, in ten years, and say the referendum doesn't pass, you just walk away from that whole levy? Or does the, is there the value to continue it?
So both an operating referendum and a tech levy need to be, uh, re-approved. Otherwise, they're gonna sunset at whatever, whenever they were, um, whatever their term is, at the end of their term, they're done. And so new authority needs to be, be granted in either case.
Tech levy delay?
You cannot do the delay. That's a good, good question, yeah. So, so really, the tech levy question, I believe this is good through twenty twenty-four, two thousand fourteen, sound? Okay, so it's, yeah, this is good through twenty twenty-four. So the district could choose, let's just focus on the operating now, and then let's circle back in twenty twenty-three and do the tech levy. That certainly is a, an option. It just really comes down to, what is the feeling? Do people feel like, you know, you're getting to a point where every two years you're going and asking another question? Do you get to a point where people are gonna say, you're gonna stop asking questions? And if that's the case, then I would say, let's put them together and put them on one ballot and do them together. If that's not necessarily a concern, yeah, you could let this run through twenty twenty-four, come back and, and address it at a later date.
Um, soundbite, what does the tech levy cover? What does it do?
Yeah, so like, uh, one-to-one devices for students. Um, it's taking care of our network administrator, uh, it also has our integrationist, um, uh,
Staff computer.
Staff, uh, yep, staff device, uh, uh, replacement for, for staff computer.
Innovation center or no?
Nope, there's, there's nothing in there right now. Um, and so that's part of what I, how I would like to modify it a little bit. Continue with the student one-to-one devices, continue with the network administrator, integrationist. Like to also do stuff with the, uh, innovation center facilitator, um, have those things in there. There's, uh, some dollars for, um, uh, third-party contracted services that we have. So for instance, like Tech Check is a, an organization that provides network administration for higher-level, uh, network issues that we may need to have help with. There's some dollars in there annually that we can tap that resource as well, so. Any other questions on the tech levy? Okay. So the next steps. I have Ellers, they're gonna come out on May eleventh, and they're going to be available to talk about more options and answer some questions. In the meantime, if there are specific scenarios, so I'm going to ask for a run on tax impact for a tech levy, that would be at that four point zero two percent to generate that three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. I'm gonna ask for a tax impact on that run, to get a, for that run. And then on the five hundred dollar per pupil, I'm gonna be getting a, a tax impact, um, statement for that, uh, as well. If there are other scenarios that people would like to see those tax impact runs, I can't do those, I need Ellers to do those. They need about a week turnaround to get them done and, and make sure they're accurate. But I'm more than happy, and they are more than happy to provide as many runs as, as we would like to see. So just give me that, if you have a specific scenario, you would like to see what the tax impact is, just give me that, I'd be more than happy to, to forward that on to them.
I'd like to see five thirty-one.
Five thirty-one, yeah. I can do that first.
I have a question about the tech levy. What it, I must have missed it, what is it currently at?
The percent? It's like three point five six seven.
And then, like you shared, the three sixty-five is based off of what is budgeted basically for what we need?
Say that again?
The three sixty-five expenses to get, you, that's how you've got the four point two, um, that's based off of what we actually need, like that.
That's taking, what I would like to take right now of current expenses and lumping them together, because I feel like it's a good fit with the tech levy. That, so that's taking existing services, existing expenses, putting them in there, and that's how I'm coming up with three sixty-five.
Okay.
Yeah. So a five thirty-one run?
That's okay, I'd like to see what it looks like.
Yeah.
That's anticipating, we're getting right back to where we were when this all started, out of the gate.
Yep. Okay. Any other additional information that board members feel they need? And I know that's a, a question I'm asking right now, and if I feel like I'm going to win on the spot, feel free to email me. If, if a question comes, if it comes over the weekend, whatever, email me those questions. Just know, if, if it's something that I need Ellers to help me with, I'm gonna need at least a week turnaround. Um, so don't email me on the ninth or tenth of May and, and have it for the May eleventh board meeting, okay? In my opinion, I think it would be best for the board to at least have an idea of a course of action regarding an operating referendum. I don't think that means that at the May business meeting, we need to have the official resolution and the board's gonna call the election. But I do think the board needs to come up with, okay, this is the direction we are wanting to go. This is the timeline, this is the amount. And then we can get that going, and realistically, then in June, I would be bringing the official resolution, the board would call for the election, and we would establish that amount and, and all of that. Okay?
So are you thinking that, so next month, we would have like more of a formal discussion to say?
Yep. Any other questions with operating referendum? Okay.
That's what you're ready, we'll go on to Steve's budget development.
Okay, so budget, uh, development, budget process, um, this is at your place. And so I just wanna run through, I would, we're at, um, on some of these things. So originally, when we talked about this back in March, we were projecting, uh, somewhere around four hundred and ninety thousand dollars or so of savings through retirements and attrition. Um, I updated that number as of today, and as of today, we are sitting at four hundred and sixty-eight thousand six hundred and fifty-three dollars. Um, so we are on track, we're moving in that direction. We, we're not quite there, but, but, uh, we're, we're in the ballpark. Which is good, because that's a significant, um, of, amount as far as when we're talking about reducing expenses by five hundred thousand dollars. Shared services, we were talking about potentially having a total savings of, uh, just shy of forty thousand dollars, thirty-nine, seven, sixty-five. As far as the network administrator piece, I believe that's done. And it's just a matter of, um, the concept is agreed to, the dollar amount is accurate. We just have to finalize, uh, contracts and everything. Business manager is done and implemented, and again, that dollar amount is accurate. So the payroll specialist, we're gonna continue moving forward with the plan that that's gonna be the next business service that we're gonna share and, and consolidate. The plan right now is to use the twenty-one, twenty-two school year as the, the way to make that transition. But we'll actually fully implement that in twenty-two, twenty-three. There will be some savings for Painesville with that, uh, because we will be selling a little bit of, of payroll services, um, to BBE in that arrangement. District assessment coordinator, this one is still pending, it's, uh, in process. I have every reason to believe it is going to move forward. Uh, it's just, it's not done quite yet, um, but it, it certainly sounds like, like it's going to, to get taken care of. Be a ten thousand seven hundred and sixty-five thousand, that's ten thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollar savings for a total of thirty-nine, seven, sixty-five is where we're at for shared services. So I, I'm thinking we're, we're well on our way for that. The board is, uh, going to be seeing, uh, one, unrequested leave of absence, um, coming to the, the April business meeting. That, that would be the projected savings of forty-seven, five, thousand five hundred and twenty. You will see that at the end of the month. We already actually implemented, uh, one savings of twenty-one thousand one oh two. That was a position that wasn't filled when it went vacant for the middle of the year, so that one is already, uh, completed. Um, instructional supply budgets, uh, we're looking at potentially, uh, being able to reduce those by about five thousand dollars. Not implemented at this point, but I think that's something that we will, will be able to, to, uh, close. Our access application is into the state, uh, that would potentially carry a two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar savings if it gets approved. That application is still pending, we have not heard, um, anything from MDE on its approval yet. And obviously, if we're looking at potentially doing some sort of step freeze in the district, that conversation needs to, um, take place with our bargaining groups and during the negotiation process. When you look at that, originally, we were talking about the board had just over a million dollars in options for, to be the contributors. As we sit here today, we're looking at about five hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars are, are going to happen as we sit here today. I do see a little bit more coming, but that's where we're at right now. We do need to look at some additions as well, uh, buildings and grounds, we are gonna be adding a, a custodian. We're also restructuring our director of buildings and grounds position. Um, so that's gonna be an additional cost of about fourteen thousand five hundred dollars. You also can then look at the district assessment coordinator. That would, would need to be, uh, uh, an additional cost to, to us as well of ten, seven, six, five. And then, um, potentially, uh, Mr. Arline is still working out exactly how this is gonna work with, uh, secondary court requests and everything. But there may be a need for some additional science instructor. And if that, that's the case, it would most likely be a halftime, um, position. We're still working on that, there's no real update at this point. And then potentially, we still have, uh, a re, uh, replacement that we still need to, to, uh, find, which would add an additional fifty-one, four, seventy-nine. So when you start adding those back in, um, you're telling, we know for sure we're gonna have sixty-two thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars of additions that are gonna need to come back in. So if you subtract that off of our five eighty-two, right now, our net reduction number that we're sitting at today would be five nineteen, seven, uh, ninety-six. So we're, we're in that ballpark, we still have some additions I think are gonna come through here. So we aren't to five hundred yet, but we're, we're getting in the, in the neighborhood. Um, and I think right now, we are able to get in the neighborhood realistically with, um, no or very minimal impact with student offerings. I, I would argue none. I know that, that, that might not be a consensus agreement though. So that's just an update as far as where the, the budgeting, um, process is at, and, and kind of, uh, an idea of what those final recommendations for reducing expenditures by five hundred thousand dollars, where that is, is gonna be coming from. Questions on any of those items?
I have a question that's sort of related, and maybe it's for Mr. Arline too, but, um, I mean, we, we have certain classes that are required to graduate. I'm, and I'm specifically speaking towards high school, maybe a little middle school, but high school, that are required to graduate. But then, like, do you need a foreign language to graduate in Minnesota? Not? I mean, most colleges might require foreign language, but do you need a foreign language? Then how much of our offerings are, are driven by student demand? And like, you know, when you go to your first year of college and you try and get into your classroom and they're all filled, and you end up taking like astronomy or something, you didn't, just to fill your science requirement? Like, how, how are we on that? Maybe it's a good question for Paige, like, do you get into, can students get into the class, or do they get funneled into classes that we're just offering because we have them there? You know what I mean?
Yeah, so.
I'm sorry.
Depends on the situation, depends on the grade level, if we tend to have a, uh, a class that is very popular and a lot of kids wanna get into. We'll typically give preference to the seniors, juniors, and work our way down, because they'll have an opportunity to get back in there.
Right.
But not every student gets every class that they have. A lot of them, they're registering before we know what the interest is gonna be in a class. So there's a number of classes that we offered at registration that just didn't have enough students in them. And then we moved, so those students will move into something else.
And they do like alternative, alternative choices?
When they register, they can, they put in alternative choices, yeah.
I would say for the most part, student, uh, student registration is driving staffing.
That's what, that's what I'm kind of asking.
For the most part. Now, does that mean that every student gets every class that they want every semester, every time? No, it doesn't. And Paige can probably talk, talk to this, but there seems to be, um,
Say anything tonight.
But I'm curious to hear what her perspective is. There's a syndrome. But, uh, it's not unique to Painesville. But it's, I have to get everything done before the end of my junior year syndrome, so I don't have anything to do my senior year.
Yeah. And actually, this year I had to take like two English classes and two history classes just to fill them, so. Cause I didn't take the high honors, or I didn't take, um, the other one with Ms. Canol, but like, I was like, whatever, if I have to fill them, then that's what I'll do. Yeah, like, I didn't take any foreign language classes either, and so like, the college that I'm going to doesn't require it, so.
Yeah, I was gonna mention, you know, there are classes that aren't required to graduate from high school, but some kids may need to take them, even if they're not required for college, they look good to get into college, and a foreign language is one of those. Might just be the thing that gets somebody into a college, so what?
The, the whole foreign language piece is a little bit of a moving target now with colleges.
Yeah.
Cause I think in the past, it was pretty much the expectation, if you were going to a four-year college, two years of foreign language was required. There are a lot of colleges right now that are coming out and openly advertising, we do not require a foreign language. So I think that needle is moving a little bit.
Now, that has come back and forth over the last fifty years, sir, and I went, it was required, and then by the time I got out of college, it wasn't required. And then it was computer language was required, could be put in, I mean, it's, yeah, it's, it's gone up and down so many times.
I don't, seventh grade, they have to take Spanish or German, right?
Cause sixth grade, they had, they had a exploring foreign language, yeah.
That's one of the points.
Other questions? All right, if not, Thomas, I'll turn it back over to you.
All right, uh, ask on the agenda, D, request for information. There anything that anybody's, uh, missing or feeling like we need to, uh, receive more attention or detail on, not coming meeting? Right, group thanks.
Quiet.
All right, with that, we will adjourn the meeting.